Hello.
Hello.
Would you like an agenda?
Yes.
Okay, well I'll give you one for fire and one for the county commissioners.
Thank you.
You're going to be here today or not?
We're not, no, last day, but I'm about to do my checks.
Okay.
Am I treating you?
Um, you might as well since I'm here.
Okay, I want your room as you are mine, so it's double check.
Idea is to get somebody else here, but that hasn't happened yet, so I should probably see how all the scoops have been made since I'm here.
Okay.
I'll let Jason know, he doesn't need to come though, because you're already here all day?
I'm here, it should be, it should be kind of shortish today, but yeah, I was fine being here for all of it. Ooh, that sounded terrible. All right, podium mic, check one, two, three, podium mic, testing one, two, three.
Hey, Sarah is here, so we're, we're okay, I'm gonna go ahead and let her kind of show me how this all works.
Manager mic, check one, two, three, manager mic, testing one, two, three.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
So I'm just doing the mic check right now, just making sure it's all good. Let's see, I should have heard this by now, but I guess not. Uh, county clerk, mic check one, two, three, county clerk, testing one, two, three.
Just latch on.
Yeah.
Attorney mic, checking one, two, three, attorney mic, test one, two, three. Meister mic, check one, two, three, Meister mic, testing one, two, three. Dennis mic, check one, two, three, Dennis mic, testing one, two, three. Beatty mic, check one, two, three, Beatty mic, testing one, two, three. Lopez mic, check one, two, three, Lopez mic, testing one, two, three. Howe mic, check one, two, three. Sounds different. Howe mic, check one, two, three, testing one, two, three.
Hello, can everyone hear me? We're gonna be starting shortly, so stand by. All right, less than one minute, stand by. Thirty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Well, good morning, want to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Those that are joining us online, Facebook, YouTube, those that are joining us with our television partner, KPTS. And those that are here in person, want to welcome you. As you walked in this morning, you could have accessed at the table, uh, meeting, uh, agenda packet. We encourage you to, uh, to grab one of those, you can follow along on the, uh, the order of business that we have today. You can also go to sedgwickcounty.org and you can see all the supporting material that we have access to, uh, on all the items that we'll be discussing today. Good meeting, uh, I don't want anybody to jinx it, somebody said it might be a fast meeting, and I've developed a reputation of not having fast meetings apparently, so. So, we're gonna go right to work and call this meeting to order for June 26, 2024, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Ri- Richard, Dr. C. Richard Kirkendall, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, everyone. Be so kind and bow your heads right where you're at. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to lift up our county commissioners in prayer. We thank you for their dedication and commitment to serve in our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance to be upon them as they make decisions that impact the lives of our fellow citizen. Grant them with the discernment to recognize the needs of our communities and the courage to act in the best interest of all. Help them to be fair and just in their judgment, considering the well-being of every individual and overall welfare of our county. May they lead with integrity, humility, and compassion, always seeking the common good. Give them strength and perseverance in their responsibilities, especially during these challenging and trying times. We pray for unity among our county commissioners as they may work together for the betterment of our community. Help them to listen to one another, to value diverse perspectives, and to collaborate effectively in finding solutions. Lord, we also pray for the personal and well-being and the well-being of their families. Protect them, guide them, grant them good health, both physically and mentally. It's in your name we humbly pray this morning, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Kirkendall, thank you, sir, again for coming and blessing us, and thank you for your work in the community too. Redwood Shaw Ministerial League, all the things that you do, sir, as a veteran too.
Thank you guys for the great work you're doing in our community, God bless and keep.
As a veteran, Reverend, we, we thank you and honor you, we appreciate you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present, next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. I'm gonna do a little backwards today, and we're gonna start off with good news. Want to give a big congratulations to our Chief Human Resources Officer, Sheena Schmutz, and our Deputy Director, Anna Meyerhoff Cole, for earning their SHRM SCP certification. They earned this prestigious, prestigious designation through the Society of Human Resources Management, which is the SHRM part of the acronym. A globally recognized leader in HR training. What's even more impressive is the test that they had to take to get this senior certification is tough. It's so tough that the average majority, they actually failed the first time, but both of them passed on their first try. So, it's a great, it's a great honor and a good congratulations to them. We have another free opportunity coming this weekend for county residents to safely dispose of old paints, cleaners, and chemicals. Sedgwick County Environmental Resources is holding their Household Hazardous Waste Collection event on Saturday, June 29th. This will be from 9:00 to 1:00 PM in the parking lot of the Hayesville City Hall. Quick reminder that this is for residents, not businesses, and tires and electronics are not accepted at this event. June 23rd through 29th is Lightning Safety Awareness Week. Here in the US, lightning kills about 20 people each year and severely injures hundreds of more, hundreds more. Most lightning strikes occur in the summer, but people can be hit any time of the year. For more information and safety tips, visit the National Weather Service website at weather.gov. And as many of you know, Sedgwick County Fire District 1 has been fighting a massive blaze at Evergreen Recycle in Park City since Sunday evening. Fire Chief Doug Williams is here to give us an update, sir.
Chief, thanks for coming this morning, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, Doug Williams, Fire Chief, and we wanted to give you an update. We did a quick drive-through this morning about 8 o'clock, and, um, right now, we expect to be drastically, um, breaking down from the event by this evening. I think we're gonna be on, um, right now, we're making really good progress, and, and I do believe that tonight, if we're not completely shut down, we, we will be by tomorrow. So, it's wrapping up fairly soon today. And we wanted to go, they have a video that we shot with a drone, that they can show you some of the scenes, so you can understand what we're dealing with. And, the, right now, this, this pile right here is, um, is mostly all out. And it started over here in the left-hand corner, over here in the left-hand corners where it started, and it went north, where there's a little plume of smoke over there. And then it jumped into that middle area, and then that's what we had to fight to keep it from going further north. And that's where we made the stop in, into those piles. A couple of things to note with the property, that, um, since the fire we had two years ago, we have worked with the owner on this, where the piles are not as large, they're not as tall, and the separation by, by code, we can require them to have a 30-foot drives between the piles, and we've asked him to do 50, and he has maintained that 50-foot, which, it, the fire did jump the first 50-foot break, but we did get it shut down where it didn't get across the second 50-foot break, so that was fortunate for us and for the buildings to the north. So, we've done, and I think that's probably why on day three, we're wrapping this up, where last time, we went to seven, eight days on it. So, I, I think that's made a huge difference in, in how long this event's going on, and, and also the effect on the neighbors. So, yeah, last time, we had the neighborhoods smoked out for seven days, eight days, and this time, it's two days of, of tolerance that they have. this time, it's two days of tolerance that they have. So, that's where we're at now. We were running around the scene since, around the clock since Sunday night, we had a lot of help from Wichita Fire, Valley Center, I think, brought a tender down the first night, and then by Monday, we were shut down to where there's only our resources, and for the most part, after day one, we're using our reserve apparatus to pump the scene, so that we're keeping all of our frontline trucks back in the stations, and then rotating crews out due to the heat, we're rotating crews every four hours, so.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, for the update. I'm gonna ask later on, if we calculate what kind of overtime we have on this, and once we know the overtime, I'm gonna ask our folks whether or not that we can claim that against their insurance. So, I don't believe that all of the taxpayers in Fire District Number 1 should have to pay for this every couple of years. So, that brings up the second question, is that what else can we direct or can be happening out there so that we don't have, this is the third fire, it's not the second, but it's the second in two years, so that we're not fighting these fires constantly?
Yeah, and I can answer that. The first night, we had some callback, and then after Sunday night, we've been running this with on-duty crews, so our overtime isn't extenuating, I don't think it's gonna be great on this. Probably the largest amount of overtime we got is with our mechanics. Sunday night, Deputy Chief Hensley called the mechanics, and he wanted to switch out to using the reserve trucks to lay the hose in. We have to lay so much, one of the problems we have is, we have to lay 2,000-foot of hose to get back in there, so Chief Hensley didn't want to use all the frontline hose, he wanted to keep our frontline trucks out of this as much as he could, so he called the mechanics Sunday night, and both, two of the three mechanics went and got reserve engines and came out, and they actually laid the hose and did part of the relay pumping overnight, Sunday. So, a large part of our overtime's gonna be with our mechanics, more so than even our fire personnel. But, that was one of the things that he did, so I don't think our overtime bill's gonna be huge. The other piece of it with insurance that I've seen throughout my career, there's been different times and different fire chiefs here, I know Chief Crumoe tried it, and I'm not so sure it didn't get tried one other time, but I know Chief Mulligan at Slina tried to do that, to bill for services, and one of the problems we get into if we bill for services is, is we have to bill everybody. You can't just selectively say, well, this guy really upset us, so we're gonna bill him, we have to bill everybody, and I think that normally is what causes the failure of these insurances to pay, is the first thing they're gonna say is, well, you didn't bill, you know, the last fire you went to. So, that's something for legal to take up, I'm sure Justin's shaking his head, so, I mean, that's something for they'd have to dig into.
So, that brings up the second part of my question, is what can be done out there so that we're not fighting a fire out there every two years if we can't even claim overtime or any of the expenses that we have?
One of the things that, I was talking to Chief Chris this morning on the fire cause, and they've looked at the cause, and, you know, we can't announce it because it's gonna be one that's probably gonna end up being undetermined. We didn't have video on this one, the last one we had, we actually had video of exactly where it started, and we could see that it was spontaneous combustion fire last time, because it was pretty obvious from the video, but we don't have video on this one, and unfortunately, the, between the amount of water and the bulldozers all over the place, the cause is probably gonna end up being undetermined. But, one of the things we talked about is trying to focus real hard with the owner on breaking apart the most susceptible things to spontaneous combustion-style fire, and getting them away from the, getting the most predictable, I shouldn't say predictable, the most possible spontaneous combustion products away from the rest of the products as best we can, I guess, is one way we'll try to focus on it, and again, you know, there's some other ways, maybe have 24-hour on-duty security or something that just maintains, because, you know, if this fire gets reported when it's really small, we have a lot better chance of it not getting to this point, so.
Very good, well, Chief, well, please keep all of our firefighters safe, that's my number-one concern out there, so we're praying for them, make sure that they come home safe each and every night. I know on all of our vehicles, we've got names of three firefighters from Sedgwick County that have lost their lives in line of duty, and we certainly don't want to have to replace those with a fourth name.
Well, the one thing that we kind of laughed about was, last time, we had some of our equipment that got placed in some positions that were a little risky, and we had some operations going that we felt were pushing, you know, the edge of, some of our people working in close proximity to bulldozers, that we don't know how good the bulldozer operators are, and, you know, and so, one of the things we emphasized last time on, like, day two, was nobody gets hurt in this event, you know, we're not gonna damage equipment, we're not gonna get anybody injured in this event, and one of the things we heard at the first night from our division chiefs this year was, nobody gets hurt, and we're not gonna put equipment in harm's way, so our guys are very, very in tune to that, and with this heat, they're rotating every four hours, they're just constantly rotating crews in and out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Chairman, and Chief, thanks for the update, and the video's very impressive. Can you brief us really quick how helpful the National Guard was in the helicopter world? Thank you to Julie and everybody who do that.
One of the things that the helicopter did for us that we believe helped out was that they put water where we can't reach. I mean, we can only reach streams and back to not putting one and a half million-dollar ladder trucks into danger and harm's way. The helicopter was able to get water into areas that we couldn't reach, which allowed us yesterday to move our equipment in closer, and then we could wet down and keep the bulldozer safe. One of the things we're doing a lot of is just wetting down bulldozers and track hoes to keep them where they can operate in this stuff, so that did help us get water where we couldn't reach, so it was very helpful.
Well, thank you, expressed our thanks to the Guard for their support, thank you.
Chief, thanks for this update, couple comments and then a question. Again, I echo the thanks to not just your staff that has been out there, and this is incredible professionals, so thank them personally from the Commission, that, just what they've done, please let them know how much we appreciate them, and the Fire District appreciates their work. Also, I want to give public thanks to Salvation Army, did they get the canteen out there? I know they've been out there, the canteen's out there, so they're serving the firefighters and those that are on-site, and again, public thanks to the Air National Guard. What was unique about this compared to last time, was last time, when you got on scene, you tried to put this fire out, and we expelled almost 1.5 million gallons of water in October of '22, tried to put that out. This was a little different strategy this time, I think it's worth noting what that different strategy was and why, could you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, anytime you put water on these kind of products, you slow it down, and actually putting water on a smoldering fire makes the smoke worse, people don't understand that, but, you know, when you dump water on a campfire, the first thing that comes off of it is steam and smoke, and so, we really, the piles are smaller, and so, our goal this time was to let it burn out as fast as we could, but contain it, and so, we really focused from the get-go, it was totally a just contain-it type of operation.
Okay, last comment, is we, in conjunction with your office, manager's office, and the colleagues at the County Commission, we issued a proclamation, signed a proclamation declaring a local disaster emergency, that's a seven-day proclamation, and that allowed us to get the resources from the state for the Air National Guard to come in. That's a seven-day proclamation. The discussion was that if we needed to extend that, we would do that through a public vote to review right now, that we're not gonna need to extend this disaster declaration?
No, we won't extend that, and also want to notice the Army National Guard, not the Air National Guard, they tend to get a little fussy one the other way.
Is that right, sir?
Well, the Army has helicopters, the Air Force flies with big jets.
Yeah, it was pointed out to us yesterday, it is the Army National.
Okay, yeah, good clarity, Commissioner. Okay, so there will be no need to extend this, okay. Commissioner Howell.
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you. I am a little bit curious about roughly how many Sedgwick County firefighters have been involved in this over the last three days?
I can't tell you that, but, you know, I mean, it's, everybody is there, I mean, they're, I think that with the heat, our Division Chiefs made the decision, everybody rotates, you know, whether you're there from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, or you're there from 1:00 AM to, you know, to 5:00 AM, but they are rotating, I think, every single firefighter through there on all three shifts, so everybody, I think, is going to be, serve at least one shift there, or partial of a shift.
I think one of the obvious things that's different than the last fire is the incredible heat, and we're having triple-digit weather right now, and it's dry, and it is dangerous because if the wind picks up, this could really get out of control really fast, I mean, I know that you're trying to get things under control, and you're doing a great job, but if things change on us, the danger is huge, I mean, there's businesses around there that would potentially suffer loss, and so, there's a lot at risk here to do this. I had someone ask me, why not just let this thing burn, you know, just let it, we don't want to waste water, right? So, they were wondering about letting it burn, I thought, well, the problem is that this can get much larger, and it could actually impact businesses all around, but I just want to say thank you to our firefighters, and to have to wear any type of extra PPE protection against a fire in triple-digit weather is dangerous, and we appreciate what they do, and it's not fun, they have to endure, their strength goes away quickly, I'm sure, in that type of heat, so just be careful and send our appreciation to what they do, everybody involved, I just want to say thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
I don't have any questions, and I'll be very short, I just want to make sure that you truly know how appreciated you are, not just by this Commission, but by the community at large, and what you do is just, it's incredible work, and so, we are just so grateful for all of you, so please make sure that your staff know just how grateful we all are, and thank you so much for being here and sharing this today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Fire Marshal, Chris, thank you so much, appreciate you guys, thank you.
That's all I have for county announcements today.
Okay, any questions or comments for Nicole? Well done, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
No one has signed up for Public Agenda, so we'll move forward, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of May 22nd, 2024.
Okay, would there be any objection if I took these two items, A and B, together? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 22nd and June 5th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Appointments, Item C, Resolution Appointing Diane Albert to the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Ms. Diane Albert, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor, this item is a resolution appointing Diane Albert to Commissioner Meitzner's First District Citizens Advisory Board, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yes, I am pleased to make this motion, I've met Diane the last couple of years, and she's got a great interest in the community in whole, and expressed an interest to join our Citizens Advisory Board, and there is an opening, and I think she'll be a great fit for our advisory board. With that, I'll make a motion to approve Diane Albert to the Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, I'll second that motion, I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to swear her in is nobody. Well, Diane, anyway, congratulations, and we'll get you to the Clerk's office to get you sworn in before the next.
Justin, go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, Chairman, is I think they could probably go to the sixth floor of the County Clerk's office, I assume they would have someone there who can swear them, and it doesn't have to happen during the meeting, so.
Okay.
You agree with that, Diane?
If you want to, Diane, you can, the sixth floor Clerk's office, and they can do that, okay.
Would she like to say anything?
Okay.
Very kind.
All right, you're more than welcome, okay. Anyway, thanks for agreeing to serve on this board, okay.
Commissioner Howell.
Chairman, I was just gonna say, normally, we have someone sworn in, they give a chance to speak, but if she doesn't want to speak, that's fine, I just wanted to also point out, in case I missed it, that she's currently serving on the USD 259 School Board, I don't know if that was said already or not, I think I may have missed it potentially, but I want to say thank you for your service to our community in that role of helping take care of our kids and their education, so appreciate you for that as well.
Okay, and here's our county clerk right now. Diane, if you want to come down here, we'll go ahead and swear you in now, save you a trip to the sixth floor.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly Arnold, for being on call.
Right on time, Chris. All right, you can sit down here, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say thank you guys very much for appointing me to the board, thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, and I look forward to continuing service, I do serve on the USD 259 Board of Education, and it's a great honor to do that, and so, this will be another great honor to continue serving our community and listening to all of our voices, so thank you guys very much.
Very good, Diane, thank you so much, we really appreciate you, and you still always stand to serve, and we're grateful for you, so thank you again. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, Resolution Appointing Cameron Moran to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council in an at-large position.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Chairman, this item is a resolution that appoint Cameron Moran to a joint, City of Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council at-large position, is recommended at-large by the Board of County Commissioners, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay. We've all had a chance to review these applications, Mr. Moran, are you, is he here? I don't know that he is here, so we'll reach out to him and make sure he gets sworn appropriately, so I'm glad to make a motion to appoint Cameron Moran to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, and again, we'll have the office reach out and make sure that he has an opportunity to sign, and sign, seal, and get delivered, so thank you again. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business, Item E, Funding Request from the Greater Wichita Partnership for the Project Downtown Master Plan.
Okay, Mr. Brent Shelton.
Morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioners, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and the next item for your consideration is a one-time, non-recurring funding request of $50,000 from the Greater Wichita Partnership to support the funding stack that's being arranged to update the Project Downtown Master Plan. This plan was originally developed in 2010 as a blueprint to guide development activities in downtown Wichita for a 15-year period or through 2025. The plan has provided a framework to advance economic growth and development in downtown of over $1.7 billion, with another $760 million in the project pipeline. Additional funding for this funding request of $300,000 for the updated plan has been secured through other community partners, and an additional $50,000 is anticipated to come from the City of Wichita. That would make the county's support about 12.5% of the projected total of the updated plan. Now, before I ask Jeff Fleuer, the President of Greater Wichita Partnership, to provide some more details about the project to update the plan and about the future of downtown Wichita, I want to share some information about the fiscal importance of the core area to the city, the county, and even the Wichita School District. So, as you can see on this slide, we've got a 20-year history of assessed or taxable valuations in downtown Wichita. Now, for purposes of this slide, we're considering downtown Wichita from Washington to the river and from central to Kellogg. As you know, tax base is comprised of three different property types, our personal property, that's machinery and equipment, commercial, personal property, utility properties, and real estate. And what the graph depicts is, over the 20-year period within the core area, personal property went from 22 million or 22% of the tax base in downtown to 1.3 million or just about 1% of the total valuation of the tax base in the downtown core area. At the same time, due to the fact of depreciation of those assets, our utility valuations declined by about a half. So, instead of real estate being 63% of the tax base in downtown Wichita, it now comprises about 94% of the tax base within that area. So, I think that speaks to the importance of having a coordinated
Partnership in downtown Wichita, 505 East Douglas Avenue. Also with me today is Joel Kelly and Alan Banta. They're in the audience, two past Chair of the Downtown Board, also continue to serve on that board to this day. One of the things, first of all, I just want to say thank you. This is a partnership, and I think that part of what happens to our success as a community, we've heard this from prospects, we've heard from people who are already here, that the alignment of the private sector, working with the public sector, having that political will to do things in this community is very noted, not only here, but across the United States, actually. And people note that as a way to move things forward. This plan, this master plan, Project Downtown, has been in place since 2010. It was a community plan that was put together, working with downtown Wichita, the county, the city. At that time, the private sector raised money, again, as they have done this time, to really help fund this opportunity. These are strategies. You know, one of the things I've learned in my career is that if you can make the unknowns known, the private sector will respond to that, as well as the public sector, because we want to make sure whatever you're investing is strategic. It unlocks the private sector to do great things in our core, but also the core impacts even a larger area, the Tin County region. So as we look at what's been happening, this is actually a map showing in 2012, and you'll notice right in the corner, in the middle of it, is what we call Block One, and that is where we really started to see things starting to culminate in downtown's development. It was the activation of that master plan. If you look at that map today, fast-forwarding, all the green indicators there are projects that have been completed since 2010. So in 14 years, we've seen over $1.7 billion that you can actually go out and touch in the landscape today. That pipeline is the highest it's ever been at three, it's right, $760 million, or I like to say, about three-quarters of a billion dollars of investment coming down the road, if you will, of investment. This is something that's really critical because part of what's happening here, we're cultivating the environment for opportunities, and we actually had an incredible celebration, if you will, about the biomedical campus. Just May 8, we had the groundbreaking around the campus itself. I don't think I've ever been to a larger groundbreaking. Over 400 people were there. You had, the state was there, federal was there, local was there. The community came out and really, I think, celebrated what's going to happen with biomed, and we're really starting to get our arms around that today on what that's going to mean. So part of it right now is that you heard Brent talk about the master plan hasn't through 2025. So what we want to do is update the plan. This is not starting from zero. One of the things that we've been doing consistently over the life of the last 14 years, we have this built on economics. We want to know what the market is telling us. What is it that we want to develop in residential? What is it we want to develop in commercial? So some of the accomplishments that's happened is that we've actually doubled the residential base in downtown since 2010. Now, what that means is, we've built over 1,400 units. Now, because of what's happening with biomed, but just the increasing environment in downtown, we need to build another 5,300 units to meet that demand. In that time period, we have had the development, a redevelopment of a hotel, the jury, we've had three new hotels built. We have one under construction, one will be starting construction later this year. So again, hitting all those markets, and you're seeing that progress because we understand what the market is telling us it wants to do. By making the unknowns known, the private sector is stepping in to make those things happen. Part of telling the story, too, is that, starting this year, these are all the groundbreakings we're going to have in downtown in 2024. It's over a half a billion dollars' worth of investments that will be made. So going from Exploration Place on March 6, we had the amphitheater. May 8 was the biomed. Tomorrow will be Destination Play at Exploration Place. Later this summer, we're going to have the groundbreaking for Vantage 906. This is going to be the redevelopment of a site that's been sitting dormant for 75 years. You talk about turning around the property tax value, that will do that on that site. Also, around the Riverfront Stadium, a groundbreaking with EPC we'll have later this summer, and then certainly the Kansas African American Museum is also doing great work on that museum in the new location as well. All that said, is that we do appreciate the partnership we have with you. It's important. It's critical. As the private sector looks at us as a community, they love to see the fact that the private sector is working with the public sector, the public sector is working with the private sector. That means we can get things done and move forward. Also, I think, as we look forward, the update of this master plan, again, will help the private sector understand what is it that we need around the biomed, because that's going to be a big piece of it. Right now, we have a great illustration of the biomedical corridor, but now we need to define it. What does that mean? What does that mean with design, the walkability? You think about the osteopathic school that we now have, and then also the new biomedical campus. That's going to equate to almost 4,000 medical students in our downtown. If we hadn't been cultivating the environment with the things that we've done through Project Downtown, I really believe we would not probably be seeing that magnitude of development around the sciences. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you, certainly answer any questions you have. Again, we appreciate the partnership. We feel like the next two to five years are going to be so defining for our city. I mean, we're now on list in Forbes Magazine. We're now being noticed in national journals about what's happening in Wichita and the region. Now is the time not to let up, but to look forward with great aggression to say, how is it we move forward as a city and as a county?
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for that presentation. A few comments and questions. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, welcome to the meeting, and thanks for the update, as always. If you could pull up that first slide, do you know how to maneuver around the graph, the chart?
Oh, that may be, switch over for that one.
You got it, Brent? I just wanted to, I think it's worth noting that in, anyway, so back in 2014-ish, which is right there at nearly the low spot of that top orange line, is when we, the community, had a pretty good vision between the city and the county and the chamber and the business community to invest in an organization called Greater Wichita Partnership to take over our business and economic development arm, instead of calling 1-800-CITY, 1-800-COUNTY, 1-800-Chamber. Now, we had an organization that was 100% focused on that, and then the spin-off at the time also was Downtown Wichita Group that just focused on specifically downtown Wichita a lot. And I think you can just see in the 2014, 15-ish, when it took a couple of years to get the feet on the ground, but you can see the benefits the last five years is just, the benefits have been incredible for the region and for the tax base and for the citizens and all that, and then plus what you have in the pipeline. So I just want to thank you, Jeff, and Alan and Joel. Thank you for being here, too. You guys have been a part of this journey from the last 10-year-ish. So thank you for being available and contributing your time and effort, and I know we pay you overtime for all your work that you do, but anyway. So thanks. And we invested then, and you're asking to update this. Here it is, 10-year-ish, five, 10 years later, to update this with all. I think it's critical right now that we join in partnership with the business community and the city to help fund this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate you bringing this to us today, and I have a question for Lindsay at some point, but before I get to that, I just want to talk about the history of this a little bit. I guess the last time this was started was 2008. I did a little bit of research on this, and I believe that they adopted a plan, I believe, fully in around 2010 or 2011, I believe it was adopted.
2010, yes, sir.
2010. At that time, did the county invest in that plan back then, or was it just the city of Wichita?
Mr. Commissioner, I don't recall on that if the county invested in it. I believe that y'all did. I can go back and check that, but again, it was a thing where it was a joint. I know that we had county representation on the stakeholders, and it was a huge community push, if you will, by to say, what is it we want to develop in our downtown? We actually started the plan raising capital in the fall of '08. We initiated the work on the plan. We did actually a national search. We had 38 firms that responded, and so they actually started the work in '09, and then it was adopted in 2010.
Yeah, and I see some of the history shows that Wichita did finally approve the vendor for that research, and eventually the county commissioner, it looks like they adopted the plan in 2011.
Yes.
So that's some of the data that I'm seeing. Interestingly enough, and by the way, on this proposal today, we're being asked for $50,000 out of 2024 economic development funds. Is that correct, Brent? Is he saying yes? Okay. And I'm going to ask about the balance of that. So if you don't have the balance, I'm going to want to know the balance on that in just a minute. If you already know it, that's great.
It's about a $1.9 million budgeted fund. We've expended about $440,000 so far.
Okay.
This year.
Thank you. Back to you, Jeff. Thank you. So Wichita is being asked for $50,000 in this case as well. Have they committed that yet at this point?
We will take that up, and we believe July the 9th is when we work that, based upon schedules of when we can take it before the council.
So going back in history here, and again, maybe I'm misunderstanding exactly what happened here, but it looks to me like the county didn't put any money in back in that first round, but the city put in $275,000.
They put in actually 175.
175.
And then downtown Wichita put in 175.
Okay.
And then we went out as the private sector and raised more money, because it was about a $500,000 initiative.
And that was one of my questions here, because today's, asked today is for $50,000, which is 12.5%. That means the total amount's $100,000, and back in 2009, it was $500,000. So how is that possible?
We're doing an update. We're not starting from ground zero. One of the things that, a big part of master plans are the economic research, and one of the things that downtown the board has done in wisdom has been to keep those updates, or keep that information updated, Commissioner, so there's not going to be a large dollar amount to have the market research. It will be an update to that, which, if we had not done that as downtown Wichita, it would be a much larger number that we would have to have for the update.
So let me ask a question about the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. So we provided $100,000 as well as Wichita, $700,000 study to develop a plan that was presented back to us, I think, in January of 2020, right before COVID got crazy. And so how is this going to impact that plan?
Well, parts of what, we always learn from planning processes, and so there was a lot of things that we did in that moment to look at how the riverfront could be further developed. Some of that certainly has been rethought since that plan was presented, actually, or the proposed. It was never adopted. But again, it was a moment where we started to generate, what are the possibilities, what are the things that we could do with the riverfront? And there was a lot of components to it. One was the market research. Part of it was understanding, two, what was the community. And so again, I think what we'll do with this update is begin to think through that even more as we go forward, certainly not focusing necessarily on a building or buildings, but it'd be more, as the master plan does do with this, is more of, how is it we want certain districts to be able to be developed, what comprises of those districts? And then certainly, as we did with Project Downtown, if you want to get into more detail, that would require additional work in the months and years ahead.
This may not be fair to ask you. Maybe I should be asking someone else this question, but it seems to me that Century 2 has a new roof on it, so it sounds to me like it's not being proposed by any plan that we raised at Century 2. That's off the table.
We don't have any plans for that.
Okay, and I assume that means that's probably true for that library, the old library as well? I don't know if that.
I know that there's work to try to find an adaptive reuse of the library. I think that there's a desire to keep that building, and so part of it is, as we continue to see the development of downtown, what could plausibly fit into that? So I know the city is actively working on that.
I am a huge fan of the new arts, saying this right, the new, what am I saying here? The place in Century 2 that does the Arts Symphony and all of that, the, I'm missing the word.
Music Theater, Performing Arts.
Well, Performing Arts, thank you. I am a huge fan of a new Performing Arts, I think, Wichita definitely needs that. I think that's low-hanging fruit. I believe there's large support across the community for that. To me, it's an easier problem to solve. Is it still a plan that we are going to have a different convention center than Century 2? Do we know? Can we speak to that at all?
I know that's a project that Visit Wichita is working on, and I know that they actually have some thoughts or proposed plans on that. Those have not been activated yet, but I do know that they've been working on that.
Let me go and give you credit. I do believe that GWP has made a difference in the downtown area, the $1.7 billion, billion dollars of capital investment. The projects are impressive. You and I had a conversation just the other day. I still think we have a bigger problem. We have some inertia, and we need to continue to make that happen. The biomedical campus is coming in, that's roughly 4,000 students going to be downtown. I think we have potentially, naturally, a grocery store may happen. We're getting to the threshold where that might be very common sense to happen. We have another problem, though. That's the issue of homelessness, and I'm not so sure that having that situation downtown makes a lot of sense in light of all that's been done. The homelessness issue, in my opinion, has not been addressed adequately, and I don't know what the plan is. I know Wichita is trying to find a solution. The county is basically cheering them on. We're not trying to solve that for them. We're here to help them if we can, but not necessarily finance the answer. But anyway, I am concerned because I see there's a homelessness issue downtown that is just out of control, and I'm a little concerned about how are we going to solve that problem? This plan needs to have, my opinion, needs to have an answer to the other problem, that's the issue of homelessness, because they're tied together somehow. You can't sell Wichita very well if you don't have this problem handled some way. And then I guess, well, that is a big concern of mine, and I think we need to have a plan for that. The last thing I'd say is this, the county is beginning to have a conversation about sales tax to replace property tax. We're not talking about raising tax revenue, talking about shifting it from property tax to sales tax. If this is something that we want to talk about as a community, ultimately it has to have legislative approval, it has to have electoral, the people have to vote for it to make that happen. I'm a little concerned about the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan, which, again, has not been stated yet, but I believe there's going to be a sales tax component of that to fund that plan, and we're getting to the point where a lot of these other cities around Cedric County have increased their sales taxes recently because they see there's an opportunity, and they're trying to not raise property taxes. The county, I think, sees the same wisdom in that, but if we raise, if we raise sales taxes to buy down property taxes, if we can get that done, I don't know how that is going to mesh with the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. I'm very concerned about the fact that we're not communicating well over this topic, and I'm not sure what to say about that today, but do you have anything you want to say regarding, if we were going down that path, is GWP going to have an opinion regarding us asking the electors to consider a sales tax proposal?
I would say, Commissioner, we always appreciate the invitation to be a part of the conversation. The partnership downtown Wichita is always eager to be at the table to talk through these things. This is, all the things you're talking about is part of an ecosystem of our community. The private sector is involved with the, as far as the homeless initiative. You know, the city is pursuing a strategy now. We're going to be working with the city as the unknowns become known about what funding may be required by the private sector to help make that a reality. We're committed to that, and so we're committed to make sure we move the community forward. Now, again, we're welcome to come to all these conversations and to really see how is it we want to move forward as a community.
I'll just wrap this up and say, I do support the $50,000 today. I probably wouldn't if it was the $20,000, but since it's 2024, and we seem to have the budget for it, I think it's time to update that plan. I am concerned about these other issues.
Yes, sir.
And I hope that, unfortunately, I've never had a chance to be in any of your meetings. I've never had a chance to hear the conversation, and no one's ever asked me my concerns about these issues, so I'm sharing those with you today publicly. I do think that these plans need to have these considerations in place because these are big topics for this commission and for this community. So again, I'll support the plan, but we need to have a conversation that begins to solve those issues with your support as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much for being here. You know, living in Cedric County my entire life, it does seem like there's just this momentum happening right now that I've never experienced in my lifetime before, and I know so much of that is because of the work that you guys do. So just want you to know how exciting it is to get to be a part of some of these things, but just how appreciative we are to the work that you guys are doing and allowing this community to really get to that next level. I agree with Commissioner Howell. There are some things that we need to work through, and I think as we go through this process of creating this plan, you know, it's a great time to be able to include some of those things into the conversation. So, but, I mean, the biomedical campus is amazing, having Calm Care Crisis right next to it, and allowing us to be able to partner with education and public and private. I mean, that's just, I don't see that everywhere, so it's really cool to experience it here and watch how well everybody is collaborating. We might not all agree on exactly what.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much for being here. Living in Sedgwick County my entire life, it does seem like there's just this momentum happening right now that I've never experienced in my lifetime before. And I know so much of that is because of the work that you guys do. So just want you to know how, how exciting it is to get to be a part of some of these things, but just how appreciative we are to the work that you guys are doing and allowing this community to really get to that next level. I agree with Commissioner Howell, there are some things that we need to work through. And I think as we go through this process of creating this plan, you know, it's a great time to be able to include some of those things into the conversation. So, but I mean, the biomedical campus is amazing, having Calm Care Crisis right next to it and allowing us to be able to partner with education and public and private. I mean, that's just, I don't see that everywhere. So it's really cool to experience it here and, and watch how well everybody is collaborating. We might not all agree on exactly what the path is to get there, but we all have the same end goal in mind, which is really exciting to, to know that, that we can get there together in, in partnership. So really cool. And I just wanted to thank you for being such a big part of and advocating and supporting the Exploration Place, Destination Place Gate EP2. We have our groundbreaking tomorrow. And it's just, it's a really exciting time and I just can't thank you guys enough because I know how much work has gone into some of these initiatives and I, I don't think we would be here in the position we are today if it wasn't for that. So we are just very appreciative. I am absolutely supportive of this and I can't wait to see what comes up with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Jeff, I just want to thank you publicly, the Greater Wichita Partnership for the work you guys do. When this is largely, this downtown is largely in District 4, my district. And we had, we've had several conversations about this specific item on our agenda today. I'm going to be supportive of this and the reason I'm supportive, there's a lot of reasons. One is that this is a plan. It's not a specific project that we're funding or a building that we're trying to subsidize. This is a plan. It's a vision for the community. I think that's squarely in our purview. I asked for a couple of things and you've honored a couple of things in your presentation today. The first one is, is I wanted you to demonstrate strong private support. I didn't want the public thinking that you were just coming for public dollars to fund a plan. And what this is, is it's a $400,000 update to the master plan, the Downtown Master Plan. But you're asking us for $50,000 of the $400,000. The private business community has really stepped up big here because they're signaling this is an important thing. The second thing is, I really wanted you to demonstrate return on investment of the original plan from 20 to 15-year plan that we'll be updating. I wanted the community to understand what is the return on that investment. Brent mentioned it. You've also highlighted some of it. There's been 1.7 billion with a B dollars invested into downtown. There's 700 million plus in, and more coming in pipeline projects that are working in downtown right now. There's been incredible return on investment. But we also have some needs and I think the public needs to understand that too. We have a growing cost of government. We have a growing cost of government and it's something that we need to be very cognizant of. Every dollar that we spend, we need to be cognizant of it. I don't believe that passing through more property taxes is a viable option for this community. So we have to be very strategic in every vote that we take and the dollars that are being appropriated. We have to be strategic on investment. I see this as a strategic investment. I see this as a strategic plan. Told you about a dozen times and I'll say it again, we have to grow. That the best way for this community to continue to do the things that we need to do to help not only just fund the core services of county and city governments, but also to make sure we have a quality of life, we're attracting and retaining our talent here, is we have to grow. We have to grow the tax base. In order to grow, we need a roadmap to execute.
Yes, sir.
This is what this is. Biomed has changed a lot of things. There's a lot of great things happening in downtown Wichita, but biomed campus is a game changer, a generational game changer. And from what I'm envisioning will likely be part of this conversation is what that whole medical corridor could look like. Part of my district is really in trouble in regards to North Broadway and the, and the lack of development that's happening. It's north of Central, but what's happening north of Central in Midtown area and North Broadway is definitely will be impacted by what's happening in downtown Wichita. So I am adamantly in support of this, this, this plan and the development of the plan. And I'm glad that you've honored the things that I asked you to do. You honored it and went above. So, and you guys tend to do that at GWP. So we're grateful for all the work that you do and the investment. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then I will gladly make the motion to approve the funding request from the Greater Wichita Partnership for the Project Downtown Master Plan.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Jeff, thanks again for being here.
Thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Request to Rename Pavilion at Lake Afton Park.
Good morning, Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Commissioner. Chairman Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I am here this morning to present to you a proposal from a citizen in our community on naming one of our facilities. Before I get into that, I do want to cover our policy on county property naming. This policy applies to our Sedgwick County owned property and includes building, buildings, facilities, parks and bridges and does exclude Interest Bank Arena, Sedgwick County Zoo, Exploration Place and the Law Enforcement Training Center. It doesn't exclude Interest Bank Arena because that is county owned property where the county has already entered into a contract regarding naming rights. And it does exclude Sedgwick County Zoo, Exploration Place and Law Enforcement Training Center because that is county owned property where another entity manages, manages the operations of that property. As far as this policy goes, the county manager and/or the Board of County Commissioners will consider naming of a county owned property for an individual or organization that have made exceptional contributions to impact the county. As far as the criteria of naming in general, individuals or groups proposed for the namesake of Sedgwick County property must have made a significant impact or contribution to Sedgwick County. Special consideration shall be given to individuals or groups who have dedicated service to Sedgwick County or there is historical significance of the individual or group to Sedgwick County. In select instances, Sedgwick County property may be named after a business, individual, organization that has made a unique or extraordinary financial or other contribution to the development of a Sedgwick County property. As far as renaming of a county facility can occur, if the above criteria, which I just mentioned, is met, a valid justification for renaming the facility is provided. And if necessary, the Board of County Commissioners has the right to remove the name associated with the Sedgwick County property if it is in the best interest of Sedgwick County to protect Sedgwick County's reputation. Changing the name will not cause confusion in the community and the community supports it exists for the renaming. That covers the policy. So what's being requested through a community member and county citizen, which is Mr. Bill Johnson, is to rename a Lake Afton, the facility is a Lake Afton Pavilion after Mark Schroff, who was our former park superintendent. Mark Schroff, July 1985, was hired as a temp at Lake Afton Park. In October of 1985, he was promoted to senior groundskeeper. In June of 1991, he became the acting Lake Afton Park Superintendent. In October of 1991, he was promoted to Lake Afton Park Superintendent. And unfortunately, Mark passed away sadly and unexpectedly in January of 2023 as our park superintendent. So Mark worked 38 years for Sedgwick County Park and worked 32 years as our Sedgwick County Park Superintendent. The Lake Afton Pavilion that he is asking to be renamed was remodeled in April of 2024. And this particular pavilion sits on the west side of Lake Afton Park. This is the exterior of the building and then this is the interior of the building that was remodeled. This does see a lot of reservations for different celebrations. And then this is the patio. So if you're standing here, you're looking towards the east at the lake. And then you will see on, this is in your consent for today, there is a donation of a paved walkway and bench by Mr. Bill Johnson and Mrs. Tracy Schroff and family in memory of Mark Schroff. This is the paved walkway and then the bench is, has been constructed as of last night and will be there in the next couple of weeks. And I would like to just acknowledge that Mr. Bill Johnson is here as well as Mrs. Amber Burnett, who was Mark Schroff's daughter. And this is again, the paved walkway and bench that will be there in the next couple of weeks. And so I'd like to invite Mr. Bill Johnson up, who is the one requesting that this pavilion be named for Mark Schroff.
Mr. Johnson, good morning. Thanks for being here.
Good morning to you guys. Appreciate the opportunity of addressing the commission in the chair. My name is Bill Johnson and I'm the president of Evans Building Company, which is a general contractor that's been in business for 62 years. I've also had the privilege to serve on the Metropolitan Planning Commission for around 25 years. Very well paid job. But I'm here today to recommend and ask for the pavilion at Lake Afton be named in the name of Mark Schroff, who passed on it, who passed away unexpectedly in 2023. Mark was a great friend to me as well as to everybody else. His passion to serve the county and the superintendent of Lake Afton and Sedgwick County Parks, I had my deals wrong, I had 32 years, but I said 38 years. Mark was not an eight to five guy. He didn't sit in an office. He could build and repair anything and always did it whenever it took, whatever it took to get the job done, even if it meant working extra hours and weekends. He could fix anything. He took care of it. Mark was dedicated and loyal to Sedgwick County. Being an employer for 50 years, I've had lots and lots of employees and I classify there's two, maybe three, but two, some guys just got a job. Other guys buy in and own it like it's theirs. That was Mark. I just want to say, he was so dedicated, he spent over half his life working for Sedgwick County. And worked up to this day that he was admitted into the hospital. That's how dedicated he was. You can't replace a guy like Mark. When Mark passed, as well already been stated, the family had donations. We ended up pouring the concrete and the bench, the family received a bench and it was assembled last night and we'll probably install it on the concrete after the 4th of July. We don't know if something would happen to it, but I think the closer we do it to the 12th, it'd be a good deal. So again, I'm just asking the commission to rename Lake Afton Pavilion Mark Schroff.
Thank you, Bill, for sharing. I've asked Commissioner Dennis to help walk us through this and supplies some additional comments and questions. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Bill, thank you very much for being here today. And first of all, I've known Bill for a long time and he said he's been on the MAPC for 25 years. Well, I served on, that's how I met him, is I served on that for nine years with him. And he impressed me so much. He is actually my appointee today to the MAPC. So he continues to serve. So I, I know and trust him. And the MAPC is probably one of the main appointments that we make up here. And you have to trust your appointee to the MAPC. And I never call him up and tell him how I want him to vote. That's, that's not our function. What I do is I listen to his advice and that's what our function is. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate Bill and bringing this to us today. I did have an opportunity to have a lunch with Bill a couple of weeks ago along with Tracy, Mark's wife. And we walked through this and we set a date for July 12th at 1:00 PM to dedicate the bench and the renaming of the pavilion. I also want to make sure, we've already mentioned, but Amber Burnett is in the office today. That's Mark Schroff's daughter. And she works for our tag office. So she does support Sedgwick County. I appreciate that very much. Yesterday, I was out at the Lake Afton along with Tanya and with Erin, our current superintendent. And we walked around the park and we looked at the new pad that, that Bill had poured there and then we looked at the, at the pavilion where the, we're asking to dedicate that in his name. This pad was poured by Bill. There's no cost to the county. We thank you very much for that. The bench was procured by the family. And I talked to Amber this morning. And as Bill mentioned, they put it together last night and it's ready to be installed out there. And it's a beautiful location. It overlooks the lake and it's someplace someone can sit and reflect on their life or the life of Mark's. One of the first people that I actually met and got to know a little bit was, was Mark. Remember, Lake Afton and Sedgwick County Park are in my district. And so one of the things I wanted to do was learn a little bit more about what he does and what happens out there. So Mark drove me around to Lake Afton and we went through everything there. We went all through Sedgwick County Park and he took me over to the Northeast Park, which is a large 600 acres of grass. But beyond that, I, he, he was a master that could do a lot of things. He had an awful lot of tools, actually. From what I learned is that we bought some of the tools from him after his passing so that we could use those to continue to maintain the park. And I appreciate that. So he did serve Sedgwick County for 38 years and died while he was actually an employee for Sedgwick County Park. And I think that, I don't know of any other way that we could recognize him more than to recognize the place that was so near and dear to his heart that he worked out there. He actually lived out there. We have a home out on Lake Afton where the, he was able to live with his family. So it was part of Mark. And I want to make sure that we recognize that part of Mark and we remember him for the future. So I don't know if anyone else has any comments, but I'd love to make a motion to approve this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was just reflecting on Mark a little bit. I may be off by a year, but I think he was 63 years old, I believe. And she says, yes, he was 63. And that, that, that is a, I guess my thought is that's too soon. And I'm sorry that he, he passed, but he was a good man. I'm one of the few commissioners here, I think. David Dennis, you were, you know Mark personally? I think you did. I got to work with Mark as superintendent, if you will, of the park out there. He and I have spoken many times. I don't know if this pavilion has any particular history with Mark other than the fact that he was out there and it's out there. But I can tell you, the bait shop, it was an issue that we dealt with in 2015. I don't know if you were aware of this or not, but it didn't sell anything other than, I guess, permits or something. But it was, it was essentially closed down. And in 2015, we worked with Mark and tried to make that a regular store. And if you go out there today, there's all kinds of things they sell. They sell everything. And that wasn't that way before 2015. So I, I connect my memory of Mark with that, with that Lake Afton Park store. It's right there on MacArthur Road. I will support the, the resolution this morning. I do support honoring him. I wish we would have named the bait shop after him or the, the park store after him rather than the pavilion, but that's just my personal opinion. But anyway, I do appreciate the memory of Mark. He was a good man and I'm sorry that he's gone and he did make a difference out there. And I'll support the resolution. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Bill, thank you again for honoring him and Amber. Thank you for being here today. I think this is a wonderful honor. So Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I do want to reiterate, I appreciate Bill bringing this to me and working with us. I appreciate the family working with us. And I think it's a great honor for Mark. And I want to remind the county commission and make sure we get it on our schedule that we have it scheduled on July 12th at 1 o'clock to, to hold the naming ceremony out at Lake Afton. So just to put that on your calendars. So with that, I move that we take the appropriate action in order to rename the pavilion after Mark Schroff and have the bench installed.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Bill, thank you again. Amber, thank you again. Tanya, thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
I'm just going to say, Commissioner Howell, if you want to put a plaque over the bait shop, we'd be in favor of that, too.
Very good. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Item G, A Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Sedgwick County, Kansas, Adopting a County Brand Policy.
Okay. Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner, we would like to defer this item. We have a little bit more legwork to do with some of the row offices and other elected offices, and we'll bring this back when that is completed.
Okay. Very good. Yeah, I'm in favor of this, too. I do think there's a little bit more legwork to be done, make sure all the communication is, is happening, so. Any objection to deferring this? So, good. Okay. Then I'll make a motion to defer a resolution adopting a county brand policy.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on June 20th, 2024.
Here he is, Mr. Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Perks and Director. The Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, our regular meeting of June 20th. We have three items for you. We're seeking your approval. The first one is the Management Information Systems for the Older Americans Act Nutrition Programs, and that's for the Department of Aging and Disabilities. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Frugal Incorporated. They're doing business as Network Computer Solutions. It's for their option number three in the amount of $123,000, and that's for a term of three years. Our second item is the Provider Network Management System for Department of Aging and Disabilities, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Case Worthy Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $79,000, and that's for a period of one year, starting July 1st, 2024, through June 30th of 2025. Our last item is the recommendation for the 2024 insurance renewals for risk management, and this recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed, and that's for an estimated total of $3,149,456. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Any questions on the, the bid board and the contracts in our view today? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on June 20th, 2024.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you so much. Hang tight, Joe. I lied. You can go. Okay. Madam Clerk, we're going to pause for a second, the BOCC meeting, and I'm going to call to order the meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Seeing no one signed up for Public Agenda, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of May 22nd, 2024.
Okay. Unless we have an objection, I'd like to take Items A and B, both minutes. Any objections to that? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the fire meeting minutes of May 22nd and June 5th, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Stoltz.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approving consent items C through E, with the exception of D, where that is the naming policy that we just discussed about, the brand policy. So please approve Items C and E on fire consent.
Okay. Again, Item D on the consent agenda is the same thing we just discussed on a county brand policy, so we're going to remove that. So I'll make a motion to approve on the consent agenda, Items C and E only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything for the Fire District and other. Seeing none, next item.
Executive Session.
Any executive session, sir? Seeing none, I'll adjourn the meeting for the Fire District Number One and resume the meeting of the Board of County Commission. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner recommend approval of consent items I through X on general agenda, with the exception of Item J. After our agenda review on Friday, there was an increase in that grant fund. I'd like someone from Corrections to come to the podium and explain that, have the commission vote on that separately.
Okay. So why don't we do, why don't we vote on Items I through X, and then we'll come back and, and look at Item J separately. So I'll make a motion to prove, to approve consent agenda, Items I through X, with the exception of Item J.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Item J, Manager Stoltz.
Good. And Lori Gibbs is here to talk us through the change that has happened since Friday.
Very good. Good morning.
Chairman and Commissioners, Lori Gibbs, Deputy Director of Adult Programs. And as the manager mentioned, we received notice late Friday that KDOC had made an error in our enhanced allocation, and in fact, we are receiving an additional $1,423 to the enhancement funds, yes, yay, that we spoke with you about last week during the briefing, and we shared the various ways that we intend to utilize the enhancement funds to include the residential contract, medical contract at residential, the addition of two new ISOs to do some work related to our mental health population, and an increase for contractions and commodities. So we would ask that you take the recommended action as stated in the agenda.
Okay. Any questions on this enhancement fund grant and then the incremental increase that Lori's discussing here? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion that the Board takes the recommended action on this item, which is to approve the Adult Comprehensive Plan Quarterly Grant Financial Enhancement Allocation. And my motion will include the updated award amount as presented by county staff.
Second.
Justin, I get that covered?
Chairman, Justin Wyder, County Counselor, I believe, just to, just for clarity, does that include all of the recommended action in the agenda item as well?
It includes all the recommended action, for clarity.
And I think that's good. Thank you, Chairman.
We're good. Square it away, Clerk. Okay, good. Okay. We have a motion, your second remains. A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.